All right. Thank you for the vacation. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education into order. Please rise for the pledge. Love and divine Mr. Sanderson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Item E, adoption and approval of the agenda. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item F, special recognitions and presentations. Our first item are our student reports. This evening we have extra reports. If I could have the principal of Pen Grove School come forward and introduce her students who are going to join our junior high representatives in their student reports.
I would like to introduce two of our students, Veronica Sandoval and Jacob Anderson. But before we get them started, I'd like to introduce their parents as well. We have Joel and Veronica Sandoval and their siblings. And we have Paul and Jennifer Anderson and also Jacob's siblings.
Hello. We are here to tell you about our school, Pen Grove Elementary. We are sixth graders and our names are-
Jacob Anderson.
And Veronica Sandoval.
I came to Pen Grove School when I was a third grader. I was very shy and I remember being scared. But I made a friend named Jacob and he's still my friend.
I came to school in kindergarten and I remember my teacher was Miss Adria. I spoke Spanish and English and was a type everyone only spoke English.
One of the reasons we like our school is that we have many activities during the school year. We have our back-to-school barbecue at Pen Grove Park, our Halloween carnival, and our Festival of the Arts, which has a talent show and an art show for students. We also have skate nights every month, our open house, pasta feeds, and many class plays and performances. My favorite is the talent show, which this year will be in large.
My favorite activity is field pick, which is the last week of school. Every class spends a day doing activities including egg toss, tug-of-war, rope climbing, and the rope climbing. And the warm weather is a great way to get ready for summer vacation.
We're lucky to have field trips at Pen Grove School. Some of our favorites are the overnight field trips we have taken to Fort Ross in July. In May, all the sixth graders will go to Camp Navarre for a week of outdoor education. We will leave on Sunday and return on Friday and spend a week hiking and learning about science outside in nature. We work all year to raise money for camp, but it'll be worth it because we know we'll have a great time. This year we had pasta feeds, recycled cans for camp, sold ice cream after school, and sold water at the Pen Grove Parade on the Fourth of July. This is our first year going to Camp Navarre, but we are excited because all the other campers will be from older schools. Some of us are going to Kennelworth next year, so we will make some friends at camp before next year.
We have ancient mules sports at our school at recess. We've had the soccer tournament, the basketball tournament, the volleyball tournament, and the football tournament. The teams are organized by Mr. Zeiler and have fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students on them. We will soon begin practicing for Westside Relics, which happens in May this year. We will see kids from all over the schools in Petaluma and will compete in events such as 50-yard dash, shot put, and four-by-four relay.
We have a community service for part of it for our fifth and sixth grade students. Each of us is asked to perform 10 hours of community service. Some kids work in animal shelters, some visit elderly people, and some work at school as special events. This year we both worked as reading mentors with younger students on our campus. The last half hour of the school day, we read with younger students.
We try to think of our communities, so this year we've had two food drives. We've collected over 2,000 cans and boxes and donated them all to COGS.
We both have favorite subjects. Mine is art and I especially like the art desert program where we do special art projects. We're both in chorus and just had a winter concert.
We are sixth graders, so we will be leaving Pen Grove School in June. Our last week of school, we will have a promotion ceremony in the evening where we invite families and friends to celebrate with us.
The next day, we will have a swim day at KOA. We will say goodbye to the school we have been at since we were small.
This is some information about our school, but we invite you to come to Pen Grove and visit. We'd be proud to show you around. Thank you.
That was really well done and I'm very impressed. So thank you for your hard work and sharing all of that. I noticed in our calendar that you have an art show coming up this month. Is that correct? So hopefully we'll get a chance to come by and see. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Well done. Okay, and our student representative from Kennelworth Junior High.
Hello, my name is Monique Els and I'm here representing Kennelworth. First, I'll talk about sports. Wrestling has just begun and we have a really good team this year. Our girls volleyball season has just ended and the girls did great. Our boys basketball team's been going on and we're really proud of them. Recently, our school held the second academic rally of the school year. Many awards were given out along with lots of prizes. Over the past week, our seventh graders have been participating in Challenge Day. Many of them come back with changed minds and attitudes. Last Friday, we held our Valentine's Day dance. Students danced in our multi, which was decorated with pink and red decor. Next Friday is our Spirit Day, Cluster Day. Students can choose a friend to dress alike with. Over the next few weeks, Kennelworth has and will be participating in Pennies for Patients, an organization to help the leukemia and lymphoma society. Placed in each classroom is a box to raise money for this cause. Right now, we have approximately $1,500 and our goal is $2,500. Last week, we sold Cupid grins and all the profits will be donated to an organization of our choice. Leadership is currently researching charities and we will soon decide on which one to donate to. Just this week, Kennelworth has started a composting program. We try to motivate the students by playing games, raffling items, and educating them on KTV. All is going well and we hope that our compost pile will begin soon. Thanks for listening.
And our representative from Petaluma Junior?
Good evening. I feel like I'm growing younger by the second year or so. Petaluma Junior High School site report. Our site reps and alternates are all out this evening. They are doing sports, cheer, tutoring, other activities. I'm sure nothing at all to do with Valentine's Day. In the Sporting Live, track and wrestling signups have gone well and practice for both will start soon. Boys basketball ends February 23rd next week. And when I left Petaluma Junior this evening earlier, I have to say Kennelworth was definitely beating Petaluma Junior a few minutes ago. So our crosstown rivals are doing all against us this evening. The renovation of our field and baseball area is almost complete and we are approaching the final punch list, as John likes to say, in time for the opening day of Little League on March 3rd. Maintenance and operation landscaping crews have been clearing brush along Western and Phantom and it all looks absolutely amazing. In the area of music support programs, Rock and Roll 101, the Philharmonic as another, are both after-school music programs led by Preston Bailey and are well attended. With the Philharmonic, if you're not familiar with the Philharmonic, it's a wonderful program that brings in music students, elementary music students from Petaluma City Schools as well as out of district schools. And it's a program that gives those high-achieving students who really want to practice hard and achieve a different level of music an opportunity to do so. So I think that's a great program that Preston's going through years. Let's see, and if they attend six out of eight of those different practices, they get to play the Giants game in May, which is a lot of fun on the field with the choir. Signups for Los Golandinas, a Mexican folkloric dance troupe, has 30 signups this year, the largest group ever. They will be performing at local schools and also the Petaluma Junior High School Open House and the community building activity called Noche de Fiesta, which occurs in spring. Career exploration for seventh and eighth graders is well underway with two guest speakers, a Kaiser nurse and a solar engineer scheduled to speak with interested students at Petaluma Junior at lunch in the next couple of weeks. We are also lucky recipients of the Middle School Career Exploration Grant, which other schools in the area have as well. And this is from SCO, it's administered by Dan Blake. And we're quite lucky to have about $6,000 in funding for career-related items for our department, such as a video camera for History Day use and a presentation table, excuse me, for independent living. We will also soon be administering the Cooter Career Exploration Inventory in elective classes. In academics, in recent Honorable Renaissance Award assemblies, more than about 50% of our Petaluma Junior High School students have received certificates for achievement of 3.0 or 4.0. History Day projects are currently being researched by our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students with the topic being the individual in history. These projects are always displayed at open house. This year that'll be May 2nd. And let's see, also a major impact grant was earned by our department. So we have four new interactive whiteboards that have been installed and more voice amplification systems and Elmos, of course. Teachers say over and over again that they can't believe the difference that these items for technology have made in their instruction. You just can't imagine how they ever did without them before. As you know, we're getting our start testing schedule put together. That'll be coming together shortly. And we're up about 40 students in terms of our enrollment from last year for the next year. Thank you very much.
Okay, and we have one more presentation. Ron Everett, our Director of Human Resources, will introduce Loretta Cruz-Maggi or Maggi?
Cruz-Maggi.
Cruz-Maggi, thank you. Who will introduce?
Good evening. First, happy Valentine's Day. Great pleasure, four times a year to recognize one of our wonderful employees. And so I would like to invite Loretta Cruz-Maggi, President of CSEA, to announce their employee of the quarter.
Thank you. We have to get a little better spiel, a little better look because people are always scared. When we walked down the hall to tell Stacy, Ron and myself and Linda and Eric Bachman, she kind of was like, "Is everything okay?"
And then the HR walked in. Never we were wrong.
Good evening, Board members, staff, and community. It's my pleasure to introduce the next CSEA member of the quarter. For those of you who don't know who classified people are, we are everybody at the school that isn't a teacher or the custodians, the clerical staff in the office, the food service people, the bus drivers, the maintenance workers that are working at Petaluma Junior High. So it's my pleasure to introduce the next CSEA member of the quarter, which is Stacy Fabian. Would you like to come up? You could turn around and then that way people can see you. Petaluma City Schools is campus supervisor at Casa Grande High. In April of 1996, she became their clerk typist. Later that year, she became an instructional assistant at Special Education. And in 2006, she began her current position of Student Records Clerk, also at Casa. Now I'd like to share with you some of the reasons Stacy is receiving this honor. Stacy is flexible, having kept her office running in the midst of changes. Many little changes. The students see her as a safe haven as she is very approachable and has a kind personality. Stacy is a very hard worker and helps out the school nurse and also helps children with their medical issues. Not only is she a good employee, but an asset to our student body. Stacy goes the extra mile to inform staff of potential student needs. She communicates clearly and concisely. Stacy is Casa Grande. She helps out at athletic events. She also collects prom dresses throughout the year to give to underprivileged girls who otherwise wouldn't be able to attend. She always has a warm smile and makes all the students feel loved and cared for. So on behalf of the chapter, I'd like to give you this little certificate and this is your gift card for Macy's.
When we have the Students of the Month, which we don't have at this particular meeting, we often acknowledge the family that supports the students. So I don't know if you would like to acknowledge your family that might be here today.
This is my husband Jake and my daughter Alexis.
Okay, we recognize that some of our students may have homework or other things to attend. We have plenty of more agenda to go through. You are welcome to stay, but I will take a very short recess in case you need to leave to get back to your activities.
Jane and Dana.
I have to fill in on the highlights because I am going to go home now. I am because I have homemade or cooked cheese raviolis by my daughter. With homemade bolognese sauce. It's for my husband. She took him a batch to Santa Cruz to be with her boyfriend, you know. Now that she's 21 and old.
And thank you for our hearts. Was that from Loretta?
Yes.
Mr. Loretta, thank you.
Thanks, Loretta.
You're welcome.
Okay.
We'll put you in charge of coffee.
All right. I'd like to reconvene. Our third report is Jane Escobedo. Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services will introduce Marla Stewart.
Yes, so I'd like to introduce Marla Stewart. Marla is here to talk about the Upstream project that is going on in Sonoma County. And she is the Director of the MSW Division of the Sonoma County Health and Human Services. Okay, thank you very much, Jane. Good evening, Board members and staff. Thank you very much for this opportunity to visit with you and talk about the Upstream Investments Policy Initiative. And thank you to Jane for the invitation to come this evening. I am Marla Stewart. I work for the County of Sonoma for the Human Services Department and I'm the manager of the Upstream Investments Initiative. And you may have heard about this initiative. It's a county-sponsored, community-wide policy initiative and it has three objectives. I'll just be quick and won't take me very long to tell you about these. The first objective is investing early. The second objective is investing wisely. And the third objective is investing together. So just quickly about each of those. Investing early, this initiative is all about prevention-focused strategies and work and an effort to just collaboratively do as much prevention as we can do and to dedicate the resources, every resource that we can, towards prevention-focused policies and strategies. And so we as a county have made a commitment to doing everything a little bit earlier, whenever we can, and we invite your partnership in doing the same thing, making a commitment to spend your resources as a school district and just getting a little bit earlier every place we can, trying to get ahead of those challenges that our children and our families face in our community. So that's investing early. Investing wisely is a commitment to evidence-based practice. We know that there is a lot of strategies and activities that are effective. There's a lot of research now about what is effective. And we really don't have the resources to spend on strategies that are not effective. And our families that we work with don't have the time for us to be providing services to them that may not be effective. And so investing wisely is really about making a conscious, committed commitment to evidence-based practice. And what you can do practically here is to submit your programs to the portfolio of model Upstream programs. This is a local clearinghouse. We invite submissions of programs. We have an unbiased review process. It's pretty rigorous. And when programs get on the portfolio, it's basically a stamp of approval that shows that that program is evidence-based, is using data, and has the highest likelihood of being effective. Now Jane put together a list of programs. You guys are already on the portfolio. There's five different programs that you're participating in on the portfolio. So I want to thank you for that and congratulate you on that. And I have to, I'll just note while that's going around, we've really built on the work of First Five in this area. And Jane's been very involved with First Five over the years. And First Five has done a great job in our community promoting evidence-based practice for zero through five. And we're really trying to just extend that through all of our program areas in the community. So you can see these five programs, Avance, Project Success, Triple P, Safe School Ambassadors, and Schools of Hope, which are all programs that you're involved in already. But I'm sure there are many other evidence-based programs and strategies that you're implementing. I mean, in education, there's all kinds of evidence about what's effective. And so there's many opportunities for you to submit your programs and kind of get that stamp of approval and be on the local clearinghouse. So that's investing early, investing wisely. The third part about Upstream is investing together. And this is really a commitment to collective impact. And what you can do here is you can submit a resolution of alignment to Upstream, which is a way that you as a board are making a formal and public commitment to these principles. Investing early, focusing on prevention. Investing wisely, a commitment to evidence-based practice. And then investing together. And you know, the programs that you already have on the portfolio show that you do have a commitment to investing together. I mean, Schools of Hope is a very collaborative activity. Safe Schools Ambassadors is a very collaborative activity. Project Success is collaborative. Avance is a program that you must be offering in your sights. Is that right?
It's, yeah, being offered at McKinley and at Dick Dow for parents of zero to three-year-olds.
So you're clearly already very committed to-
Zero-year-olds?
Zero-year-olds.
Zero-year-olds. You're already very committed, obviously, to investing together, which is great. One thing that we have in Upstream is we have 21 indicators of success. And part of what we're asking you to do is to kind of sign on to doing activities that promote those indicators of success. Five of them are related, or four of them are related specifically to education, doing a better job at third grade reading, third grade math, high school completion, and then getting kids into higher education. So those are the ones specifically related to education. So why should you participate? Well, I can think of four reasons why you might want to participate. The first one is that it's a way for you to make an official and public commitment to Upstream principles. Second is that participating in the portfolio is a way that you can really promote outcomes-based practice throughout your school district. It's a way that you can encourage your staff to really be thinking about evidence-based practice. And when an organization wants to submit to the portfolio, we provide a lot of technical assistance. So the actual process of getting on the portfolio is a way for you to expand your capacity to do evidence-based practice within the district. Third, as funders, and I know you're funders, you provide funding for different organizations, I'm assuming. As a funder, if you use the portfolio as one of your screen criteria, you are making a commitment to using your money wisely. So we have at least three funders locally that I'm already aware of, the County, United Way, and First Five, who have started using the Upstream portfolio in their RFPs that they put out. And then fourth, by doing a resolution of alignment and really kind of signing on to Upstream, it's a way that you can communicate with your community about providing educational services that have the best possibility of success. Upstream Investments is fiscally sound. It's a way that we can tell our community that we're making good use of taxpayer dollars, that we're investing our dollars into the things that have the highest chance of being effective and are going to do the best for our community. So we welcome your partnership and we look forward to a resolution of alignment and more programs on the portfolio. Thank you.
So what we'll be doing is we have the draft resolution of alignment. We will be putting that on your agenda in the future. Discuss and think about that. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Sure.
All right. Item G, approval of comments January 24th, 2012.
Second.
We have a category of comments from the public and I have three speaker cards, but I believe they are in response to a discussion item we have on the agenda. So I am going to skip this section at this point, if that seems reasonable, and just go on to the public comment regarding that discussion item. Item I, because we don't have any other public here. It appears to be. Who might speak? Item I, a report on activities and correspondence of school board members. It's been a busy couple of weeks. Several of us attended, and Steve, attended the Boys and Girls Club Crab Feet, a big community event. Attendance at volleyball games, basketball games, and the adult school education graduation. Thank you. And then the sad memorial service for Sarah Wadsworth, our French teacher from Petaluma High School. She passed away recently. So it was an event that the students and staff and the board really appreciated. Okay. Item J, the approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have one whole item under Administration and Human Resources, item two. The official 2012 Delegate Assembly ballot recommended motion that the board vote and record on the original CSBA ballot the selection of one CSBA Delegate Assembly member for Region 3A. In our packet, a couple of weeks ago, we received information about two candidates. We have that information in our packet tonight as well. Has anybody had a chance, I mean, obviously you've had a chance to review these. Does anybody have any questions or, I guess we have to have a motion first, that we need to discuss the candidates and if anybody has a recommendation?
I do not know either.
I don't know either.
I have to add Brad, which I met him once. But I was looking for guys to review and round one of those two.
Qualifications and your opinions on whether-
I did like what he wrote.
Yeah.
I'd like to be answered. I mean, not that I didn't like hers, but I was a little more partial to his.
Right. My perspective is he seemed to have a little bit more experience with the activities that a person in this position could do with help. A person in this position, but again, I'm open to suggestions.
Would you like a motion to vote for Ed Gilardi?
I would need to vote a motion, yes.
Oh, motion.
Vote Ed Gilardi.
Second.
And for the discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ed Gilardi. Okay. And the rest is consent. And now we are on to discussion items. We have quite a few under Business Services. I had one, I just had a question about item 11 having to do with the, let's see, that's page 56.
The reclassification of the fund balance.
Right. Is this something that's going to cost you a lot more time or is it? I'm just concerned in reviewing this policy that-
Yeah, no, I don't think so. Basically, we'll pretty much keep operating the way we have. An example of this change would be one of the components in our current fund balance that we always share with you is the restrictive, what we have self-restricted for retiree benefits.
Right.
So we will have to have you recognize that as a formal aligning.
It's something we've been doing anyway.
Right.
Okay.
So, yeah, I don't think it's going to really change very much.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, I know that there's reasons that we have to do this, but I wanted to try to alleviate any additional burden as much as possible.
Oh, well, thank you.
Sorry. Okay. That was all I had on questions under Business Services, under Educational Services. Item eight. First reading of a mental board policy discussion regarding the following mental board policy, BP 5145.12, search and seizure. Again, this is the first reading, we won't be voting on it. And discussion items, so Dave, we have several speaker cards. Do you want to start?
I would like to. I have some information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Soon am I locked out of this right now?
No.
So the first reading of this board policy is motivated by some of the campus behavior that we have as a challenge that's been going on in increasing amount over the last couple of years. The amount of suspensions and expulsions related to substance use, particularly marijuana, has had a significant rise over the last few years. And in a few moments, we're going to show you, there it is. As we look in this first column to our left, that entire school year, we had 54 students district-wide for the entire year that were suspended for a 48900C event that's relating to substance use on campus or possession or under the influence. As you see, as we look at the last two full school years of data, '09, '10, and '11, those numbers have doubled and almost tripled in terms of suspensions district-wide. As we look at our numbers in the junior high level, going from eight to 41, that's an increase of five times. That's a significant increase for us in terms of what we're seeing with students. As we look at some of the other data here, breaking down '09, '10, and '11, in grade seven through eight, we took the suspensions that were 48900C in '09, '10. You see, there were 18- You see, there were 18, 17 of those 18 were marijuana-related. And as we look at the '10, '11 numbers of the 41 events, 30 were marijuana-related. We look at the high school, '9 through '12, district-wide, 118 48900C events, 101 were marijuana-related, and 72 of 86 last year. When we look at data for this year, in terms of the first 69 days of the school year, last year, there were 52 marijuana-related events district-wide, resulting in 250 days of suspension and seven expulsions. This year, we're seeing again a significant increase, almost triple the amount of expulsions based upon substance use. District-wide, we have many different programs for prevention, Red Ribbon Week, the McDowell Drug Task Force, Project Success, many of our speakers, Project Alert that happens in the PD classes, even our Challenge Day curriculum talks about this type of thing. Nightmare Puberty Street at the junior high schools. There are a myriad of different events. One of the big things that we're challenged by now is the more liberal marijuana use laws and the provision of marijuana through prescription recommendations that take place. Many of these events that are taking place on our campuses involve family or friends that have medical marijuana cards, and the students have greater access to that unless there's greater use, there's a greater supply on the street, it's out there for a lesser amount, and it really impacts the overall attitude of substance use that we have. The thing anecdotally that goes along with that is that we have a multitude of students that are facing the discipline consequences, such as expulsion, as well as truancy issues that are involved in substance use on a regular basis. This is a significant problem for us in the district. We're always looking for other preventative measures, and we know with our great relationship with law enforcement, Peddle and the police, their presence on campus was also a big factor. And when we don't have the SROs there, we miss out on that. This new board policy, the way it's written, gives us an opportunity to have Peddle and the police on our campuses to a greater amount. We'd like to have them come and do assemblies and show the students and families if they want to see it, what these drug detection dogs can do, and show them that there may be some points, some around them days throughout the school year, that these drug detection dogs might be on the campus inspecting a variety of different places. By no means do we want this to be a gotcha issue. We want it to be a prevention piece. We want them to know that this is something we're paying attention to, the law enforcement community is committed to it, the school board is committed to it, and hopefully we can get support from families and community members that will support this addition to our board policy.
Thank you. I have several speaker cards. First is the DeShaylin, would you please come forward?
I'm DeShaylin from the Ford Casa Grande High School. I was going to say, I live at 333 Casa Grande. That's not quite true, but it's close. Dave asked me to come speak to you tonight a little bit about what impact it has on the schools for us to have to investigate so many of these marijuana suspensions. And so I thought, well, I'm not particularly a numbers person, but I was curious about what exactly is the impact? What's the term, in terms of man-hours? How much of our time are we spending on this? Sometimes it seems like we spend all day on it, because we do. So 77 events in the first 69 days of the school year. So for each event, you have an administrator, generally an assistant principal, but sometimes me on a busy day, investigate for, I would say, a minimum of an hour, including the parent contact, talking to the student, doing a backpack search. If there are multiple students involved, it can stretch into a half a day or more. But let's just say an hour. We have a campus supervisor generally assisting us for at least part of that time. We always want two adults present anytime we're searching a backpack, so half an hour of a campus supervisor's time. Our discipline secretary then writes up a report, makes contact with the parents to set up a discipline hearing. We always require a site hearing for a student to come back after a five-day suspension, and it's almost always a five-day suspension for marijuana use. The discipline secretary enters the information in Ares, writes the report, sets up a site hearing with Dave Rose, generally emailing back and forth about that to see a time that he can come, because Dave is always present at these as well. So let's just say conservatively, half an hour of her time. Teachers then, preparing lessons for a student who is being suspended for five days. Average student has six teachers. Let's say, roughly speaking, conservatively, an hour to prepare lessons for a student for five days of being out of school, grading that work when it gets returned, times six teachers, so let's say six hours. Discipline hearing then is held before the student comes back. That's a half an hour of the administrator's time, half an hour of Dave Rose's time, half an hour of the counselor's time. So for each student who is suspended for marijuana use, we're talking about approximately nine and a half man-hours. That is 1,827 man-hours each year at the current rate we have of suspending students. That's a significant amount, and you think that the average person who works a full-time job works 2,000 hours a year, right? The student misses five days of school. That's 1,500 minutes of instruction lost that they will never regain. Again, at our current rate, that's 80,500 minutes, instructional minutes a year, of loss to students for marijuana suspensions. The job of keeping our campuses clean continues to get harder. Dave mentioned some of those reasons. Medical marijuana. I can drive down 101 and see a big billboard telling me exactly where I can go to get it, and I don't need much of an excuse. I have a hangnail, I can probably walk out with a medical marijuana card. Many of our students get their marijuana at home. It's been four years since we lost our school resource officers on campus, and that is a loss that we are still feeling at an increasing rate. Societal messages that marijuana is really no big deal, probably safer than drinking and driving, right? I had the honor of judging freshman debates in public speaking for a semester for final exams, and one of the debates was pros and cons of marijuana use. And one girl stood up with a lot of conviction and said, "I can tell you for sure, marijuana is no big deal. In fact, my mom is a nurse. She's very successful, and she uses marijuana several times a week." So I wanted to say, can you please tell me where she's a nurse, because I really don't want to go there? But the fact of the matter is, this young woman believed, because of her personal experience, that marijuana use was really no big deal. In fact, my mom uses it, and she does really well. My friend uses it, and when he stopped using it, his GPA went down. Those were her facts. In addition to that, students are constantly finding better and cleverer ways to bring marijuana onto our campus. And, you know, for example, when you look at this, you think, well, I might have a pair of folded-up glasses in here, or a lipstick, maybe, something like that, right? If I were a teacher and I saw this on a student's desk or in a backpack, I'd think, no big deal, except it has a marijuana pipe in it with a little leftover. This was confiscated from a student at Casa Grande. Everybody needs a highlighter on campus, right? Doing my work, taking notes, highlighting, being a good student, except this particular highlighter has a marijuana pipe inside of it. If you saw this sitting on a student's desk, you wouldn't think twice. This was confiscated from a student at Casa Grande High School. You probably have sensed by now, I feel very passionately about this. We see every day what this does to students, this increased marijuana use. You can bet that after missing five days of school and 1,500 minutes of instruction, students don't just bounce right back. These are not our 4.5 GPA students, although there are some. But generally speaking, these are struggling students that we're suspending because we have to, because they're bringing marijuana onto campus. So I think there's no magic cure for this. There's no one thing that we can do that is going to make it all better. It's going to be a combination of a lot of things, particularly help from parents. But I do believe, particularly since we don't have SROs anymore, that having these dogs on campus on a random basis, on an occasional basis, educating students, allowing the police to forge relationships with our students, will make a difference. And I think it's an important difference, and I think it's high time that we took advantage of this. So thank you for your time.
And then my next speaker, Mike Cook.
Good evening. My name's Mike Cook. I'm a lieutenant at the police department. One of the jobs that I do is to supervise our K-9 program. So I understand you're considering a policy that will allow you to use drug detection dogs in the schools' prevention strategy. We try as hard as we can to work with the schools in any way we can, and for that reason, we're willing to consider almost anything on a prevention strategy or basis. To echo some of the things that have been said, we are seeing just a tremendous increase in the use of marijuana. The laws surrounding marijuana are completely quagmire. There are many unintended consequences from that law. Almost, you'd have a hard time finding anyone at the police department who would take an issue with a patient actually needing medical marijuana to treat an illness, but that's not what we're seeing. We see that, but then we also see a dramatic increase in the availability of marijuana, the abuse of that law, and an increase in dealing both to adults and to children. We, the numbers actually are skewed a little bit because they're growing, and our statistics are going up as far as marijuana-related incidents, but there are a lot more that aren't even static because the law is so fuzzy that generally you just default on the side of not static it or not making an arrest or having to deal with it in some other fashion. So just anecdotally, both in the schools and around the schools, after school, in the evening, parties, cars, tremendous increase in the amount of young adults, and kids, actually, with access to marijuana and using it. And it's created a tremendous problem for us on the enforcement end of it. And I know you guys are facing the exact same thing too in the schools. And we don't have a great solution for it. I think that law obviously needs to be looked at and corrected, kind of not what we do. We usually deal with the enforcement end of the law, and I can just tell you that it's difficult for us. As the dog unit, our K-9 supervisor, what I really want to do is give you a little bit of idea of what, kind of what the drug dogs do, just so that you have it when you're making a decision, because your decision is to institute the policy. The policy will allow you to use either private hired dogs to ask us if we're willing to do it, and as I said, we're willing to consider it. Drug detection dogs, we have actually what are called dual-purpose dogs. They are trained in both drug detection and in personal protection. And that's a very different thing than just a drug detection dog. They are tremendously accurate. They are trained with double-blind training exercises where literally the handler, the dog, and the evaluator don't know where drugs are placed, and the dogs, time after time, go straight to it and detect it. There's a tremendous amount of research, and I won't go deep into it, but as far as court purposes go, the dogs are tremendously accurate. They rarely make a mistake, and usually when they do have a false alert or a false positive, a lot of times through interviews, we'll show that they alerted, let's say, on a closet door, "We won't find anything in there." On follow-up interviews afterwards, we'll interview suspects, and they'll say, "Yeah, I used to keep my drugs in there, but I moved them last week." And the dog can detect what was left there the week prior. So they're tremendously accurate. We don't use our dogs to search people for drugs because they're dual-purpose dogs, and they do article searches and location searches. So even on the street in an enforcement mode, we don't have our dog physically check people, but we will check cars, containers, homes. That's how we use them. There are dogs, private dogs, and some drug-detection-only dogs that are trained to actually do detection with live people. We don't do it because it's just not with dual-purpose dogs. Though they're highly trained, they're still dogs, and we generally don't do the drug detection with people just because of the safety factor. Alerts with the dogs, when a dog finds drugs, what it does is, it's either an active alert or a passive alert, and that depends on how you train the dog. Some dogs will train where they find a scent of drugs, they will just sit, and that's your indication that drugs are present. Other dogs will actively paw at a location or a container to indicate that there's drugs in there. Some will give you, there are some other different kinds of alert, but those are the main two. They never, they don't, they're trained to bite when they find drugs. They're actually reward-driven. When they find the drugs, they're rewarded with a toy, and that's how they're trained, and they actually, to them, it's just another day at work. So that's kind of, in a nutshell, just a really quick, I know, fast outline of what's there. And I wanted to open myself up to questions if you have while you're considering this policy, questions about the dogs, how they're used. Certainly, I'll take all questions.
I guess another question I have is, to what extent is it, I mean, what is the law with regard to probable cause? I mean, Dave, maybe you can, whoever is here.
We have an attorney here.
Oh, very good. So if we were to bring somebody to the school, whether it was you, a private company, whatever, we have the right to do that at any time? Is there a noticing thing? How does that whole thing work?
Perhaps we should...
And I actually have a question about the dog too, if I could ask.
Yeah, ask the question of the dogs. And then we can kind of go...
And it would be great.
I know Mike to be a brilliant legal mind, so I just... I could also add that answer, but I wanted to show anybody off.
I told you, here's your easier path.
So go ahead with your questions.
So do you do, or have you done, or has the department done some type of, like what Dave was talking about, a demonstration? Is there...
We do demonstrations. We're open to considering, you know, the request for a demonstration on what dog capabilities are, certainly for you as well, while you're making the decision to show you what they're done or what they are capable of. And we're looking at it, you're asking if we'll consider it as a prevention strategy? Absolutely.
Have you or any of the dogs had any experiences on school campuses with this kind of interdiction?
We have not. Other places are experiencing the exact same problems and looking for solutions as well. I'm actually in the process right now, doing some research with other agencies to see what experiences they have. I know there are a few within the state that are doing similar things, and I'm actually reaching out to those agencies to find out what their experiences are.
Now, are you aware, are there any other, as a law enforcement officer, are you aware of any, like, marijuana detection sensors? You know, they have these gas sensors and carbon monoxide. And I'm just asking that, it's a little off the subject, but I'm just wondering if we had those kind of sensors in lockers or, you know, it's my, some of those gas sensors are really cheap, they give them away. I mean, they're like, you know, I'm talking about the carbon, are you aware of anything like that?
I think it's a very fair question, and a good one. I'm not aware of anything that's practical or as proven reliable as the dog.
Yeah.
And physically, all we have are, as far as an alternative to drugs, we go on sight recognition, and then portable, we have portable chemical tests to confirm, you know, the content of what it is we find.
Or save a bag of oreas out there and see if it gets them.
I'm not sure if this is an appropriate question for you. You talked about the police department doing it versus an outside agency that comes in to do it and has dogs. So what happens, do you know, or maybe you might know, what happens when an outside agency, this is not a law enforcement agency, it's a private service and has dogs, and they find something off school? Are the police department then called?
That's a...
How would that...
Yeah, it would depend on what we found. So if we, if it was an outside agency, if a dog alerted on a locker or a backpack, we'd be required right away to bring the student to that locker or that backpack and say, "The dog has alerted on your property, on your backpack. Is there something in there that you shouldn't have or that shouldn't be at school? And we're going to look through it because we have now a reasonable suspicion to look in this area. Let us know if there's anything in here." Depending on what we find, we could contact the police and ask for them to do an investigation and possibly cite the student. Or we could handle it in-house, dealing with suspension and our dispositions that we use.
And would we have the same option at the police department's areas where their dogs, who they find...
Correct.
...if you do, and they can still...
Correct.
Yeah, the discovery would be the exact same for us, the same issue, whether you hired a company to do it or we end up using ours. And then you still have the option of... And then you still have the option of handling it administratively. If you didn't want to prosecute, then you have to basically do an investigation and try and determine...
I think that's one step further than what we're really discussing tonight, but I just haven't gotten that far in my, which is good to think about, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else?
Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Mark.
And our next speaker, Marco Fong.
My name is Marco Fong, I'm the Assistant General Counsel for School and College Legal Services. A few months ago, Mr. Rose asked me, asked our office to consult on the legality of drug-smiffing dogs in public school. And we provided the district with a memo, which you should have in your act, that essentially says, yes, they are legal, but there are some limits. And, let me explain it this way, that for an individualized search, you need what is known as probable cause. And that is the reason that the dogs are not generally used to sniff students directly. We are using them to, and in terms of a more general search of the building, of desks, of lockers, of any items that the child, the student voluntarily leaves behind, we have, the district as a public agency has a right to protect the safety of its students and staff. So essentially, we, the dogs can search lockers with students away from them. They can search classrooms and desks with, again, with the students not in the classroom. And anything that is found in that search then establishes probable cause to question or search the student himself or herself. The, it sounds like you have a lot of questions, so would it make the most sense just to move to the questions or...
I think, continue with what you're...
You're making it harder for me.
Sorry.
Another point, and you didn't ask for this, but I just want to clarify. And I'm sure you probably have our updates, I believe we did an update a few years ago, that medical marijuana or having a medical marijuana card does not permit a student to either use or carry on a school campus. There may be an odd situation where they have third-stage cancer or something, but that's very unlikely, and you would need a doctor to specifically say, "That child needs a drug school hour." The... But essentially, you know, the question of arrest and prosecution is entirely separate. The district has a right to maintain the safety, health of its students and staff. If you are, if the dog does alert on a student inadvertently, you know, when the student's passing by, that's an interesting legal question. But that's the reason that we say that the dog must be alerted and the alert must be noted only by the dog's handler. And, you know, if, essentially, if you wind up in a plain smell question, we would recommend the administrator calling our office and saying, "What do we do here?" You know, if something's out in the open, there's an accepted legal doctrine that it's in plain view. So if you have a dog walking through a school and the strong smell is so strong, and I don't know if this happens, that the dog just starts alerting, you know, randomly, seemingly randomly, then you can probably act on it. But those are, those situations will be very few and far between because the main purpose of this, as everyone has said, is preventative.
Right.
So I have a question, I know this is theoretical or not, but as I read through this policy and it talks about metal detectors, it says in order, and I'm paraphrasing, "To ensure a safe school environment, superintendent may make students walk through a metal detector and come into school as long as it's uniform and consistent."
For much the same reason the courthouse has metal detectors.
Okay. So is the, but what I'm hearing you say with regard to marijuana is that you can't actually make everybody walk past a drug-sniffing dog when they enter school in order to maintain a safe educational environment? And I'm questioning, it's not, and I'm not, not your personal, what's the difference?
I think the difference in the law is frequently one of, well, this one's been allowed by courts and this one hasn't yet. Yeah, you know, obviously, there is an interesting argument about that.
I think the other one is metal detectors specific for violent acts. Guns, knives, and immediate threats.
Yeah.
I don't think the courts yet are prepared to say pot's an immediate threat. They're looking at a physical saving arm. That's the distinctions, I understand, at least with the courthouse situation and how they got through that. It's to keep people from...
Bringing a gun.
Bringing a gun or a knife or a weapon.
Right.
That's correct, but the more abstract argument that isn't a search of persons.
They're not nuanced, so that's...
Two choices there.
So is there any movement afoot in that regard or is it going the other way?
He, these days, the movement's been strongly to allow searches of most kinds.
Because, I mean, you look at Dave's numbers and Lynda's numbers with regard to the instances and the burden. And, you know, safe is, has many meanings. So I guess I'm just questioning which way we're going on that. Nobody wants to be a test case, but at the same time, I think what Dave's sort of talking about is potentially throwing out this idea that dogs may or may not be there at any given point.
Well, the dogs may be there, but we're also providing notice to parents and students prior to the school year or upon enrollment. There is the possibility that dogs will be used for drug searches.
Okay. Now, is this meaning that the drug searches are actually going to take place while the students are in the classrooms?
No.
Okay, so the dog will be circulating amongst the students?
No, no, I mean, some of that's in that, sergeant might be able to answer that more.
Right, they, my assumption is they wouldn't go into a classroom, they'd just stay in desks, but while kids are in classrooms at desks, they may be in the hallways and in the lockers.
You would send all of the students out of the classroom before the dog comes in to do the search of the desks. We would not recommend doing it the other way because then you are creeping into the world of individualized search without probable cause.
But even if you search without probable cause, so you just don't act on it. But when the dog's pawing at him, it's like, well, at least we know who has the pot. You just can't act on it, correct? I mean, you're not detaining the student, you're not artificially arresting anybody.
That would be correct, but I think, I think it would, if that would started to happen, we would be begging for a complaint with the Office of Civil Rights.
Right, okay.
That you, I would recommend being, we would recommend being extremely careful about doing that sort of thing.
In, in the language, it refers to that we would not use the dogs to sniff out a person. But if we had other reasonable suspicion that the person might have...
Once you have reasonable individualized suspicion, you can go ahead with the search.
With a search without a dog?
Without a dog.
Okay, that's right.
And I would recommend a pat search or something like that, that nature. And then there are procedures for those sorts of searches. We even have, we even wrote in the possibility that someone will do this electronically someday or use some animal other than a dog because there's talk that pigs, for instance, have a more sensitive nose than dogs.
And they're very smart, yeah.
So I suppose, search pigs may come into vogue. Yes, we can develop a side business in California. But in any case, we've tried to create a policy that gives you some flexibility. And for instance, we added in the ability of the district to use a breathalyzer on a student if there is individualized suspicion.
Right.
Actually, while we have you here, can I maybe just go back about eight months to a specific question regarding that? Can we breathalyze students without probable cause? You get on a school bus, Seth? I'm going back to grad night.
Oh, the dance.
You remember the grad night question?
We have advised on it, you have to be, you have to show some series of incidents or risks essentially that, you know, if there were, you know, drunk-driving arrests or someone died in an accident due to, you know...
Or that it's gradually...
Due to intoxication. I don't know that, well, you know, we've sort of signed off on that at times, but it's better to have it supported in some way so that we'll, you know, we'll breathalyze every student walking into the dance. I suppose it's, it may be doable, I would, the publicity from it would be so extreme that unless you had some reason, you know, a specific reason to do it, which may be that you had to, you found 12 bottles of Jack Daniels at the last dance.
And I'm not necessarily recommending, I'm just, this came up before as an issue with regard to grad night and transporting students there and how to get them there sober and keep them sober.
Understand.
He's just hitting you for free legal.
I would say that the law is not a fixed thing.
I suspect this is appropriate.
You know, if you've been following gay marriage debate, one day it's legal, one day it's not, and one day... It's legal in certain ways, and some of these pre-search things, you know, like the metal detectors, have, you know, they may change.
Are you aware of anybody else that's doing this now?
I know a couple, a couple districts in the county have been exploring it. There's at least one district in Mendocino County, I think there are two districts in Mendocino County that have implemented it. One of them used a private company, and I believe neighboring counties definitely have, other neighboring counties definitely have.
Is it okay to do the, we'll call it the physical search as opposed to the personal search? The physical search on a random, completely random basis without giving like pre-notice, say like on the, you know, the DUI checkpoints? You know, where they have to give, the police have to give a notice to the public at large that those are coming as one of the ways to be able to do that group stop without probable cause? So, and I know that's to the person, but are you aware of anything would require pre-notice? Like, read over the laws, we go, "Don't worry, kids, tomorrow we have a locker search."
Yeah.
Then it wouldn't be random.
No, no, that's my point, is that DUI...
We're talking about a search of the person versus a search of a locker?
No, no, I'm talking, I understand your point about probable cause of the search of the person. I'm saying if we want to do a physical environment search, like you seem to suggest that the dogs could run through an empty classroom or down an empty hallway, do we have to give some sort of notice if we're going to do these random dog searches?
Not beyond what you do at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
At least that's been upheld so far.
Okay, okay. Because otherwise, it's not preventative.
Exactly, it was.
Well, it prevents people from breaking.
If you're stoned enough not to hear the warning, maybe we catch you there.
Well, it's not as effective as it is.
Right, right, right.
And, you know, I would, there is this balance between having metal detectors and dogs roaming the halls every day and maintaining a learning environment. And it likely should remain something that's relatively unusual, but doesn't happen necessarily on any prescribed schedule.
Well, I think that, I mean, I think for everybody to say, we'll ask you the question to the extreme to try to find out if there's a balance somewhere in the middle to figure out how we address this issue that unfortunately is, we just got out of a closed session, dealt with again tonight, and we did deal with every other Tuesday night.
We wrote a policy to be, to give you as much, or to give the district and district staff as much leeway as...
Is there any case law, is there, has anything actually gone to court?
Drug-sniffing dogs have gone to court.
What's the regard to schools though?
Yes, yes. But again, you know, they've upheld generalized searches of the premises, but not of individual students so far.
Okay.
I do remember that being the subject of case law is never good. You should never strive to be. Versus somebody in case law.
I advised on another matter not long ago, where that's, that was my point, was that you, the last thing you want to be involved in is a civil liberties sort of issue that goes to federal district court because you can be there for a while, the stakes are unlimited because there's no money on it, and no one, you know, even when you win, you, you know, you get to be famous, but nothing else.
But you spend a lot of money.
And normally you would, I mean, frequently you would get the support of one of the school, you know, CCA for instance, to support, you know, the district's position.
So in short, personal searches, directly we could bring in a drug-sniffing dog when there are no students around to sniff the facilities and whatever may be in the facilities.
The school can certainly be in session, but the student can't be next to the locker. And the other provision we have written in the policy is that a student cannot be forced to leave an item, a personal item in the classroom.
Right.
But if they do, that's essentially verdicting. And the assumption is, I, to go a little further, if something's found in a student's car or a car that belongs to a student, or the student's locker, or the desk, that essentially becomes a rebuttable presumption that, that whatever, whatever material is in there belongs to the student or the student has something to do with its being at school. Obviously, if the student has a persuasive story that, you know, someone else got to their locker or stuck it in there.
You think the car is the same as the locker?
If it's on campus.
The car, if it's on campus, and I don't know if you've heard about the, there's a relatively unusual case out of Glenn County, I think, where a student had supposedly been duck hunting, and he had the gun in the gun rack in his car, but he parked on the sidewalk outside the school. And the governing board, I think the county board said, "Well, that's not school property," so they overturned the expulsion. But if it's, if the car is on campus, then it's subject to search. And, you know, it's also subject to questioning for whoever either drove the car or who normally, whoever normally brings the car to school. And I suppose, you know, if they're in a carpool or something, whoever rides in it.
I have a question for the tech.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, that was very, very helpful.
Staff will, you know, can answer and get any questions to us.
Okay, thank you, appreciate, appreciate your time.
I'm sorry, I'm getting, the older I get, the harder it is to hear stuff.
No, no, I have a question. When the dogs are doing the drug sniffing, are they on leash still with their handler or are they off-leash?
It can be done, it can be done either way, normally on leash, but you can certainly let them go. Just kind of clear up one other thing, at least on dog use, you asked about alerts of people going by, can the dogs be overwhelmed? They can be overwhelmed by scent, but generally it takes a lot. So a U-Haul truck with 100 boxes of marijuana in it, it might not find the cocaine for the overwhelming marijuana. Most of the time, it actually will, so they can be overwhelmed, but it's fairly rare. And as far as alerts on persons, the dogs don't just sniff 24 hours a day. They have smells all the time, but they're actually told to search. So the dogs turn on and turn off, if you will, at the handler's request. So, you know, when we're out at the fair with our, our dogs, they aren't necessarily sniffing everyone that goes by. They'll start when the handler tells them, "Go search."
And then a question for the two of you, so if we were to pass this, I am assuming that, I don't know if it would be, there would be some further procedure or policy you would put in place on who we're going to use and what it's going to cost us? And we'd get to see what, or we'd know what notice you're going to put out to the schools from being here? I mean, there'd be more than just this general, we're okay, you know?
The details of that would be in the AR, in the regulation that will be in the next one, so we should work those out.
So this policy talks about dogs may sniff around locker's desk or vehicles, so is that around vehicles? In other words...
They would not normally, they would not normally go into the vehicle.
Okay. And would a dog smell from the outside, Mike?
Absolutely. Absolutely, from the outside to hidden compartments inside.
So the old Yosemite Bear rule.
Doesn't work, yeah. I mean, they'll, they're that accurate and that good.
That's about it. I've got two kids, one through high school and one in high school, they never use a locker ever. I don't know, Lynda, you tell me, but lockers don't seem to be...
We don't have lockers at the...
Oh, that's right.
I mentioned there's this fascinating case that's pretty recent. It's, I think, being reviewed where drug enforcement agents took a GPS. Car, the suspect's car was parked in a public place. They stick the GPS under the fender, and the court says that's not a search. that's not a search. So...
It's actually just changed.
Yeah.
Oh, did it just change?
Just changed.
Yeah, that's right.
It now actually requires a, a search warrant.
But I'm just talking about how it's very fluid.
Yeah, and, but yeah, it's a great example of how, one day it's okay, the next day it isn't.
It is a lot to think about, and it would be nice if we had, you know, public awareness of this issue, if there were any concerns by our community, it would be nice to get their feedback on this, as well as to be able to, to look at any other ways in which we can curb this growing problem, which a couple of years ago, we had started to see a pattern in our expulsion hearings, the increased use. And it was anecdotal, and so we'd asked Dave to, please give us a summary of what's been happening. And thus, the slide that you showed earlier, we, we want to look at all options to try to reduce this, because clearly, it takes a, a full-time person to process this. That's the equivalent 1,800 and something hours a school year. That's extreme, and in our current budget situation, we just can't afford that. And the, the bigger damages to the students who are missing instructional time. And we've also seen, unlike the report on the speech debate, we see a correl, huge correlation between the use and grades declining. So it has to be addressed. So any feedback from the public?
I just have one other quick question.
Of course.
But it just occurred to me, because of something that you said. Differentiate for me, please, a car driven by a student to school parked on school property and not parked on school property, because some of our schools have parking that's, don't have enough parking.
And it's, it's not, I mean, this was just a ruling by County Board of Education. I don't think it really made it to real court, but the notion is, you can be suspended for activities in or at or related to school.
Well, is my understanding, we're responsible for the children getting to and from school, or that the activities happen?
Jurisdiction, not responsibility, jurisdiction. And so what we've done, Troy, is when we have a suspicion that a student has possession under the influence or is used in and around their vehicle, we're going to ask them for permission to search and ask them to open it. And if they grant us that permission, that's fine. If they say no, and they're under 18, we're then calling the parent and asking the parent. And most typically, the parents are giving us permission, because they typically don't want their students doing this either.
Although actually, that exact thing just happened a few weeks ago, and we called the parent, and the parent said, "Absolutely not. Absolutely not."
So for the purposes of this policy, when it talks about dogs being sent around lockers, desks, and on vehicles on district property or at district-sponsored events, would that relate to a car parked on English? A high school student's car parked on English? Not on our property, but clearly their vehicle to go to school that day?
We'd have to have a reasonable suspicion that there was something that was creating a threat to campus or students or property.
So if Mike's dogs were here sniffing lockers, going through the parking lot, they would not extend, that search could not extend to off-campus parking, but we...
No, it's our student parking. I typically wouldn't want to pursue that.
It could easily...
I don't even know what it is, and then, or I'm going to try to...
But if you have strong individualized suspicion that there's a pound of cocaine in that car, it's also a police matter.
Exactly. I understand the, we know specifically from high school that half the work on campus is off-campus. So does that, how does that work, with regard to this?
That's a limitation to us, and that's why we train our EAs and our campus supervisors to make sure that they're following the procedure that's school legal and the police have outlined for us, and that we have to establish reasonable suspicion before we start doing any type of search or investigation.
I do remember when I was a teacher, and they had smoking on campus, that I would always find staff on the sidewalk outside the school, during breaks sometimes, smoking cigarettes. So it's, it's the same notion.
Okay. So thank you all for your input and coming tonight. That's, thank you very much.
Take care.
It doesn't matter there, this question's all right.
Okay. Any other discussion items?
You just retained, huh?
Item K, future business calendar of activities for board members' consideration, and agenda items for our next meeting, which will be held here at 6:00 PM on February 28th.
We will, our district is going to have both our realtors and federations realtors, and possibly CAs relative to negotiations.
Okay, great. Anybody else have anything we specifically want to, okay. Given that, then we will now adjourn to closed session. Thank you.